Good morning, everyone. Today's Thursday, April 28, 2022, and we're here for a book session. And as always, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Bob, uh, nope, he's not here. We'll have to have Tim, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make a statement. This weekend marks the beginning of Little League season here in Riverhead. This is always a fun time for all our young ballplayers and we wish them a successful season of fun, laughter, and we hope that they bring in many home runs and win many games. And as many of you know, it has been a priority of mine and the current town board to secure funding for lighting at our town ball, ball fields so visitors and visitors to the town of Riverhead can utilize our fields at dusk and in the evening hours. We are all well, this effort is well underway and we anticipate hearing the words "play ball" under the lights by Memorial Day weekend. Frank, I understand you are a pretty serious ballplayer in your days and we hope to see you out there under the lights and show us what you have.
I'll definitely be out there, but I think you're overstating my abilities.
Okay, okay, thank you, everyone. Moving on to our first discussion, this discussion item, which concerns the sewer district superintendent, Michael Reichel, is he here? I, okay, I, um, is here today to discuss the expansion of Riverhead, the Riverhead Sewer District for 1743 Middle Road in Caverton. And Mike, good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Morning, Michael.
Morning, sir.
Okay, what we have is a petition request from the property owners to extend the district boundaries to include their property. It looks to be a 37-acre parcel on the northwestern quadrant of the, of the sewer district. And if you go up, you go down Route 58 and you go on to the expressway, that cloverleaf ramp that you take to get on the westbound line, it's everything that's on the outside of the cloverleaf and it goes all the way down to, all the way down to Middle Road. There is no sewer main that extends to that area. They are boarded by the last properties in the district, which is the, the two hotels and the county, the state highway department yard. They'd have to get an easement in order to, to go connect up to the district. First thing that has to be done is a map and plan has to be done by the engineers for the sewer district, which is H2M. What they will do is look at the amount of flow that's to be generated from the facility and they'll do some downstream calculations on the collection system to see if there's sufficient capacity in the collection system and the conveyance system as well as the, the treatment plant, see if there's enough capacity at the treatment plant to handle the additional flow. The, that map and plan, that gets paid for by the developer. I have a call into H2M now for them to give me a cost estimate on what that would be. So if the, if the board is willing to entertain the petition, then you just need to give them the okay and I'll have H2M draw up a, an agreement to do the map and plan. They'll give us a check to do the map and plan. I'm guessing it's going to take a couple of months to do the map and plan. It's quite a bit involved in it because the, it is so far out in the district that it, the water goes through several different pump stations. It's in the farthest reaches of the district. So it's going to impact all of the collection system and, and most of the pump stations that it takes to get the water to the treatment plant.
Mike, just to be clear, this is the North Point developer?
This is, um...
Yes, it is. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, it's North Point.
Okay.
So the, in order to extend the district boundaries, it has to be a board decision and it's also a DEC decision. After everything is done and the board agrees to do this and the developer agrees to pay for any improvements that may be necessary to extend the district, then it goes to DEC and we need to show them how we're able to extend the district and still serve the existing district.
Bring on the new capacity for it.
And the petitioner is a contract mandate, so they don't own the property, correct?
Well, it looks like it's, it's owned by, by Mary Haven.
I think the attorney for the petitioner is here.
Chris, you wanted to come up?
Yeah, come up quickly.
Good morning.
Morning, how are you guys?
Good.
A chair gets in front of me every time.
You look like you're ready to play golf.
Uh, no, not today. Maybe tomorrow.
Good morning.
Good to see you. They already own the, uh, North Point owns the property, the 36 point, six acre piece and they're about to close on the Mary Haven.
Two, two, 2.4 acre piece.
Right, so the total acreage will be about 39 acres once they acquire the second piece. But they're in the process. We're, we're about to close on the acquisition of the Mary Haven piece. So they'll own the entire 39 acres.
Good.
So Mike, as far as, you know, the extension, you're, you're good with it? You, you think that the department will have the capacity for it and there's no reason for us to...
It's, it's up to the board as to whether you want to move forward with the petition fee, want to entertain the petition and, and do the, do the map and plan.
Right.
I don't see any harm in doing the map and plan. It's going to give us, it's going to give them and us a lot of information as to whether it can actually happen or not.
Okay.
And if, you know, if it can't happen, what needs to be done to make it happen if they're, if they're willing to continue to seek...
Which would be borne by them anyway.
Yes, everything's going to be borne by them.
Of course. Yeah, so they're just going to actually assess the capacity and inform us. That's, I'm fine with that.
So my, my question is, because you're the furthest part away from the sewer district, so you're talking about that capacity moving through all the current piping that's already in place, that we're not just looking at putting an extension on any new piping, we have to validate what their current condition is of, of the piping during the entire length back to you.
Correct.
So if something is old and needs to be replaced and they're going to borne, you know, to bear that expense to replace anything, it's, it's underground during the entire round. I mean, that it's not just, oh, we did an extension, but we're not responsible for the pipe that runs down Main Street. But in essence, if you put in an extra, you know, load onto it, then, then you would be responsible to make sure that it's upgraded.
Exactly. And that's what the map and plan is going to identify because this flow goes down to, down Route 58 to Osborne Avenue. It goes down Osborne Avenue over to Cranberry Street, down Cranberry Street to Roanoke Avenue, down to Elton Street, down to Newton Avenue, to Fishel Avenue, to Howell Avenue Pump Station, and then to the treatment plant. So there's a lot of piping in there that may have to be upsized or increased. Some of the, the pump stations, that'll be evaluated, will determine if there's enough capacity at the pump station, if maybe the pumps have to be upsized or, you know, if they're sufficient to handle the additional flow.
With the extension to this property, is there any benefit residentially to anybody in the area to also tap into this that don't, that their sewer not available right now?
You mean up in that area?
Yes.
Well, but they're, they're kind of landlocked from connecting to the district. So anybody that is outside of them, you know, you, they would have to then extend the sewer district main to, to connect up. This property is kind of landlocked by the expressway.
Right.
By expressway ramp and by the, the hotels and the state property. So they'd have to get an easement through the state property or the hotels to connect up to the main that's on Route 58. Because the main, it's on the north side of the road and it ends just short of the overpass of the expressway. So that's...
It's not far.
It's not far.
But it's not cheap.
Yeah.
No, so it's not cheap.
Never is.
No, no.
An approx, I know you can't say for sure by all means, but until the map and plan is done. But what would be the, what is a ballpark estimate for this hookup to cost?
When you talk about hookup, you mean the connection fee? You mean the, the fees that they would be responsible for?
The whole job from what they need to get to their property and...
We don't really know that until we do the map and plan.
I understand.
Because that's what it's going to...
Several million dollars? Couple million dollars?
Hard to tell.
Thirty-five ninety-nine?
I don't know. This ain't the prices, right?
Nine hundred and ninety-nine?
More expensive than Earl's Shrine.
I, I, I really don't know.
Okay.
Because there, you know, there, there are some things that need to be...
Fair enough. I, I know it's...
And the, the way the market is now with things, prices of things going crazy and...
Don't say supply chain, please.
I'm so tired of that.
So how do we know, like, so you're, this project has not been developed, so you're going to specify specifically, you determine what type of usage you think you're going to put into that? And how do we, how do we know that 10 years from now that we're staying within that same usage and that we don't approve a plan now, you know, for, for the beginning stages of construction and 10 years it's developed more and it has a higher demand? And then are we going to be responsible at that point to do upgrades? So how do we, how do we predict the future of what, what you're really going to need and what you're going to put into this?
Well, our proposed use is an industrial building. The flow would be .04 gallons per square foot.
It's about, it's about 20, 25,640 gallons per day. That's, that's quite a bit. That's a, that's a good chunk.
That's substantial.
Right. But we would have to look at, is the entire buildout of the property as to whether, to answer your question, the entire buildout of the property to see if you can encompass all of the property into the district.
What I mean is it become manufacturing or something where you're going to be putting a lot of waste down or is it, is it storage where there's minimal, you know, usage?
Well, this is, it's proposed for...
The usage changes a number of years from now.
Well, if that happens, we have to come back in for a change of use. We'd, we're currently proposing an industrial warehouse, storage and distribution center. The proposed connection is through the hotel site. Of course, it's going to be subject to the map and plan. We understand the downstream impacts on the district. We know we're only looking to go to the closest connection point and the additional flow, what impact it's going to have on any sewerage facilities downstream, pump stations, sewer mains and sewer gravity lines, all the way to the plant. And the commercial district along Route 58 currently is connected to the plant that's on the, you know, on the, on the Biconic River. So we understand the, the magnitude of the project and the potential impacts of this, on the sewer district. And that's what the map and plan is going to analyze. And then we'll have a decision that has to be made by us to see if we want to go forward based on the cost estimates that are going to be derived from the map and plan. And then, of course, the sewer, the town board acting as the sewer district board and the New York State DC is going to, we're going to be subject to approvals from both. So we understand that.
I think more specifically I'm asking that is that if, if it comes to an agreement and, and this project goes to fruition and it gets done, then the impact becomes greater down the line. Is that something in which you're always monitoring, Mike? You'll know what goes into the system. How do you revisit that? How do you go back to the table where you're putting in a lot more than we originally estimated?
Well, when, when, when it comes to, when it comes to design of, for, for construction, there's Suffolk County Health Department standards that are used. And those standards are in place so that they can, they, they have an idea of how much gallons are going to be anticipated to be accepted. Like a restaurant is 30 gallons per day per seat for the restaurant. Industrial space is .04 gallons per square foot, also with warehouse space, .03 gallons per square foot. So you have an idea of how many gallons are going to be generated. But like I said, what we're going to have to look at is the full buildout of the property based on its current zoning. Not, we can't do that on future zoning because if they want to, again, change it or put something else in there.
You're going to calculate it being built in its entirety, even if it's not.
Right.
We're looking to build it, we're, we are proposing total buildout under current zoning. That's what we're proposing now. If there is a change of use down the line, we'd have to come back before the board. There would have to be a new analysis done by the sewer, by the sewer district. And if we wanted to change the use, it's going to have greater amount of flow, we'd have to get that approval. Right now, we're asking for approval for the 25,000 gallons per day that we're proposing to construct, based on the building we're proposing to construct on the property.
All right, so the...
Really, all you're proposing is a map and plan so that they can figure out what the ins and outs of the project will be.
Right, what the impacts are going to be.
Yeah, the very first step. We're at the very first step.
Yeah.
We made a petition, the response is a map and plan. And we haven't, the map and plan hasn't started yet. You guys are going to tell us what developer fees have to be paid in order to effectuate the, you know, to, to complete the map and plan.
Okay, I'm fine with the map and plan to assess the impact and the analysis of the flow and the cost analysis. And that's all we're doing. It's an information effort to see where we stand, where we go, and I'm fine with it. Anyone else?
I'm getting a gun to lose by doing it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I just, it's, it's all part of now the new cost of doing business in Riverhead with the sewer and the water, the way we're approaching this. Instead of just letting people come in free willy and do whatever they want to do, now we're actually looking deeper into our infrastructure and I think it's a good thing. Chris, I know you're aware of it from water and sewer side, but as long as we're upfront about it and in the beginning, everybody knows what it is. That's, and that's what this is. So yes, yeah, I definitely approve going forward with this.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris.
I don't know if you'd mind me just stay on the, on the next item too.
Oh, you are?
We do. Busy man today.
Next one, next discussion. I'll let Greg Berman and one of our, who is one of our planners to come forward and discuss matters surrounding 205 Osborne Avenue, Riverhead Parking District petition. And Greg, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, members of the board. What we have before us now is a petition submitted by 205 Osborne Avenue LLC to expand the districts of the Riverhead Parking District Number One. This petition was submitted in connection with the 205 Osborne Avenue Site Plan Application, which is currently under review by the town board. Back in February, the town board granted preliminary approval for a five-story mixed-use building consisting of 37 apartments with ground floor office and amenity space. Under the provisions of the recently adopted Railroad Avenue Urban Renewal Area, one of the community benefits that is available to developers is the, they are not required to provide parking for non-residential uses provided the applicant opt into the parking district through petition to the town board. So one of the conditions of that preliminary approval granted on February 1st was that the applicant must opt into the parking district under the provisions of that town code. So the applicant has made the petition to opt into the special district. I do have a resolution to schedule a public hearing, which I believe would be the first meeting in June. That would allow the board to consider the district expansion and potentially allow the project to move forward towards final approval.
As lay is on to the parking district, the parking district is generally in favor of doing this simply because the more people in the parking district, in theory, the less each participant or each member in the parking district pays in taxes. So it's always a good thing when we add more people to the parking district or more areas.
Win-win situation.
Yes.
Anyone, anyone else?
Does it play like a role at all when they're in the parking district? Does that mean that he's not responsible to provide parking for the facilities? Does this, how does this affect, because wasn't one of the restrictions that you had, that you were short initially parking spaces?
So maybe I could add a little flesh to the bones here. We are proposing to have 35 onsite parking spaces. Our residential use only requires 24 parking spaces. So we have 11 existing proposed onsite parking spaces for commercial uses. Our total commercial space requires 15 onsite parking spaces. So we're only short four onsite parking spaces to meet all of our parking demand as approved by the board. You, you have already done, granted preliminary approval. We're coming back for an extension to the parking district based upon the overlay zoning district, which requires anyone who cannot meet the full demand for non-residential parking to opt into the parking district. Our full non-residential demand would be 15 spaces and we're providing 11 spaces. So the option was to either make application to extend the parking district to the property or to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals to see if we can get a variance that would allow us to have 11 onsite non-residential parking spaces where 15 are required. In conversations with staff and with the Community Development Agency, we decided to go forward with the extension of the parking district, which would mean we did not need a variance for the, for the, for parking spaces that we couldn't provide onsite for non-residential uses.
So here we are, the only conditions that we're talking about are four parking spaces. That's it. And if you go through the DBA and they grant you the variance, there's, there's no funds coming to the town.
Right, we wouldn't have to be in the parking district if we got a variance for the four.
Exactly, yeah. Now, if you go and you opt into the parking district, we get funds. It's usually well-accepted. So that's the most feasible...
We'd become a taxpayer to the district, which...
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if, I mean, you guys have realized that this developer is trying to do everything that's in the best interest. They want to be a good community member and so they're going to join the parking district, even though we believe we will probably have sufficient parking onsite because of the 35 spaces, the residents will be there at night, the non-residential uses would be there during the day. So we don't really see the, we're doing market rate apartment units and our intent is to have parking for everybody who resides there. But, so we're going to opt into the parking district and we're about to, we're making this application.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move forward. Thank you, Greg. But go nowhere, Greg. You're up next again.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have our CDA Director and Emily Podente, our Deputy Attorney, to review and discuss proposed changes to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. And Dawn and Emily, do you please come forward? Good morning. Welcome back.
Hello.
Hi, welcome back, Dawn.
Thanks.
All right, so this is a proposed code amendment to Chapter 301 called the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Back in, I believe it was September of last year, the board, we presented this to the board. We initiated secret coordination. Unfortunately, just due to the workload, it kind of took a little bit of a backseat. Now that we've got some staff, we're looking to move stuff along. And we do have a couple of subdivision applications that are currently pending for the planning board, which this Long Island Workforce Housing Act would be applicable to. In short, this code was drafted to bring our town code into compliance with the state legislation known as the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. I believe it's Article 16A. What it does is it provides for certain developments, it can either provide a mechanism for the town to have the applicant provide onsite affordable housing units, pay into a fund, or there's provisions for providing land elsewhere in the town for the construction of workforce housing units. It is pretty thorough in terms of how those calculations are arrived at, where they would be applicable to, and there are provisions for the applicant to opt out of those requirements, essentially if they reduce their maximum density. For example, if a residential subdivision were to come in and they had an approved yield of 10 units, if the developer voluntarily reduced that number by one, so if they came in with nine units, they would not be applicable to the regulations. And again, that is in line with the state legislation. So really, this next step is just to move the legislation forward, schedule a public hearing on it, get public input and move forward towards amending the code.
Emily, Dawn, you want to add to this?
No, it's really just being consistent with the New York State Legislature putting into law in 2008, the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. There are numerous municipalities, Tana Babylon, Brookhaven, Huntington, Islip, North Hempstead, some villages, Farmingdale, Hempstead, Mineola, which have basically moved this forward. What we did when we went through several draft provisions together, we looked at the other municipalities, we looked at the audit reports from the state controller regarding their provisions and how they implemented. We did a compare and contrast regarding the HUD provisions and Suffolk County provisions regarding workforce housing. And we believe this is consistent with all of the above.
So what's actually the change?
It's the entirety, the entire section here. It would add a section to Chapter 301 called Part Six, LXV, which we all, we all kind of struggle with Roman. Thank you.
I just looked it up here.
So yeah, all, all of these sections, Section 301, 357 through 364 would be proposed to be added to the code, basically add an entirely new section.
So we're just adopting the state code.
Well, yeah, correct.
Correct.
Bringing our code in line with the state legislation.
The formulas that they're using for, with the median family income, is that statewide or is that based on what we on Long Island? Because I know it's very different.
So I based it on, you know, and again, I looked at the other municipalities, how they did the formula. And then I cross-referenced, like I said, to the HUD income guidelines. And they set forth the guidelines for the Nassau Suffolk region. And they give you a whole table. And then we have the Suffolk County provisions regarding housing opportunity programs. And again, they implement these HUD guidelines for the value. And I think we determined not only were we consistent with that, but we were consistent with the municipalities that received favorable rating from the controller in their review. So...
And it's just another tool in the toolbox of, you know, ways to get affordable opportunities, particularly equity, you know, ownership opportunities, which I do think we're short on. And if we can encourage the developers to create a couple of affordable lots and put some homes in there, that, you know, just makes it a little bit better. And if the board goes forward with the CPF, half percent tax, that could be used to supplement also purchasing with the first time, you know, down payment assistance and things like that.
So we talk about, use the term affordable a lot. This is true, in my opinion, workforce housing. What it was really intended by the legislature was in each of our municipalities, providing housing for the essential workers in the community, such as firemen, nurses, medical personnel. A lot of times, we use the generic term affordable. This really isn't as we, affordable, it's workforce.
And it's very timely because we're in inflation right now and the, the interest rates are rising, so it's getting increasingly harder to afford. So I think this is very timely.
And the market is brutal right now for first-time home buyers.
But the CPF, I'll tell you, that's affordable. That's not workforce. That's affordable. That, that, that's what the amendment, Town Law 64K is. This is workforce, really.
Do we have any projects in line that this is affecting?
Yes.
Uh, so there are several subdivisions. I believe there's two or three pending. And under the provisions of this act that's adopted, it would result in the creation of, I think, four single-family residential lots that would be maintained under the workforce housing guidelines. And those are, those are basically a density bonus based on an approved yield map. One of them is one I'm reviewing up on Middle Road, 22-lot subdivision as of right yield. The 10% density bonus resulted in three additional lots. So there would be three workforce housing lots on that subdivision. And there's another one that I'm reviewing that would result with, in one additional lot. So between those, there would be four residential lots created. And then any further subdivision, any, you know, commercial development involving multifamily residential would also be subject to this.
And to be clear and highlight for you, the RA40 zoning district is excluded.
Correct. Because the, the RA40 zoning district already has a workforce housing component. Correct, because the RA 40 zoning district already has a workforce housing component. It already has a, essentially, double density provided that double, that additional density is provided as workforce.
On a side note, do we know, Matt or Greg, do you know if Jeff has started putting together a list of all projects pending that we request? Okay.
He had, yeah, he has that, and we've reached out to VAS, who handles our, you know, property management system. We have put that request in. The timeframe for them to complete that was a little longer. We're going to try to work on getting that shortened, but we have put that request in to get, just put the technology in place to be able to produce that list quickly.
And eventually, you can submit projects online. Hopefully, that's down the line.
We do require digital submissions of everything, but you know, the...
They're made available to the public.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, the, the planning board meets the first and third Thursday of every month, agendas are posted. Just make it clear, the planning department is always available, we always answer the phone. If there's any questions that any members of the public have, they can feel free to call me, Jeff, Matt, Heather, we're always available, we're always there to discuss pending applications.
There is software, quite a few software companies out there that work strictly with planners, and people can, in one system, submit the applications, people can have access, depending on what availability the town wants to afford individuals, and it's the way to go. We're in the digital age.
There's actually a grant now that we're looking into that could provide that service.
That's great to hear because it's now being practiced across many municipalities, and I think we have to move to speed in that regard.
Yeah, it's a, it's a funding issue, as always, with, you know, everything we do, but if we can, we're looking at the grant to see if it might work for us and what the, you know, matching is and all that, and if it does, we'll bring it to you. And if you're interested in, obviously, we work with planning on selecting whatever it is that works best for them.
Yep. Great. Great. Off to rock. Anything else?
Thanks, guys.
Great. Thank you, everyone, and have a good day. And for our last discussion item, I'll ask the planner, Matt, chart us to join Greg again for a discussion regarding possible code change regarding battery energy storage system. Matt, thank you for taking the lead on this, and the floor is yours.
Right on the microphone.
See, rookie, rookie man.
So before the meeting, I gave you guys all a memo that kind of gives the highlights of what we're going to be discussing with battery energy storage here today. It's also got a couple of zoning maps in it and two specific maps that I want to talk about later on in the discussion. I hope you all had the opportunity to review the code that I sent out. It's a little dense on the details, and I know most of this is focused on safety aspects, proper siting, making sure things are properly screened, but we want to, you know, inquiries on this kind of stuff is, they're coming in frequently, so we want to make sure we have all the tools to review them properly and make sure they end up in the right place. So in the basis sense, there's, from NYSERDA, we got a model code that breaks battery energy storage systems into two tiers. A tier one, which is less than 600 kilowatts, which is something you might see in a Tesla battery pack that would go on the side of your house, or tier two, which is over 600 kilowatt hours, that's grid level storage, which could help with, you know, when a renewable might not be producing more and then producing less overnight, this could store energy and then be sold back into the grid. The large part of this code deals with tier two, but it also does address tier one. In terms of the review, I'm not going to get too deep into all the definitions here. General requirements, everything will need a building permit, tier one or tier two, and an electrical permit as you move up from a tier one to tier two. That's where the heavier review comes in, special permitting by the town board and the site plan review by the planning board. In terms of zones, where this is allowed, right now, we're looking at industrial A, industrial C, planned industrial park, and then residential, tentatively APZ and R80. In terms of residential, I know it gave me a little pause at first, but the reason we're looking at this, because when people are looking to cite these battery storage sites, they need to get into the grid. So there's two existing transformers that are in APZ and in RA 80. So if you look at that handout I gave you, the last two pages, there should be one for Tuttle Avenue. The gray, the gray parcel is the transformer, and then everything that's marked in red on that page is based on what our requirements are. It's not possible to cite a battery storage there, either because it's preserved land, the parcel's not big enough to how we have the code written, or there's another principal use on the property. The yellow is where it could potentially be located. So in terms of the impact on the residential zone, I think this is pretty minimal now. The information we don't have is, you know, the problem with life is, they don't tell municipalities a lot what they plan on doing, where new transformers are going to go. So obviously, as we go through this, we're going to have to learn as we go. In terms of requirements, minimum lot size in a business industrial zones would be, would be an acre. If this is going to go, like I said, if a tier two is going to go into residential, it's got to be within 1,000 feet of a substation. The minimum lot size for residential would be 80,000 square feet, 75% lot coverage, maximum height of 20 feet, transition yard requirements of 100 feet when it's adjoining residential property. So it's pretty limited in a residential zone. These will all need to be screened, front yard, side yard, transition yard, basically, so we don't see them from the roadway. And then in terms of, if this is going to be accessory or principal, we're saying this is a principal use unless it's a solar farm where potentially it could be accessory to that. I did outline several avoidance areas, such as FEMA zones, open space, parcels that have pramac soils, unless they can demonstrate that where they're going to cite the, the battery facilities, not on pramac soils. Historically, or culturally significant resources, conservation areas, scenic corridors are within wetland jurisdictions, both for the town or the state. So in terms of the submission, there's a lot of technical stuff that we'll need to get in review. I've been working with Craig on this and Andreas, they're reviewing it to just make sure it meets the state code. The state code has been recently updated to include all this, so as of now, it looks pretty good. We need to do a little bit of tweaking. They'll need a commissioning plan, which basically shows how this is going to come up to speed. And then what I think importantly is a decommissioning plan, which lays out if, A, there's some kind of problem with this facility and they have to shut it down, or when it ends its useful lifespan, how it's going to be taken apart, returned to its natural state, and how they're going to dispose or recycle all the infrastructure left on the site.
Do we have an idea of what the useful life of these, some of these are now?
Some of them are about 25 years, that's what I'm seeing.
So similar to what they're...
Similar to solar. That's what I mirrored a lot of this on.
Except I haven't heard that there's a desire for the old ones to be shipped to third world nations to be used, like with the solar panels.
Not yet.
So to me, it's another issue with green energy that creates a problem down the road for us that, you know, it's like, hey, it's great, it's great, but it may not be great for our green kids, so.
Correct. I think that's definitely something we have to take into consideration. And then we're requiring that for the lifetime of the facility, that we have a decommissioning fund, which performance bond, that'll cover the costs in case, you know, someone walks away and the town needs to...
So there'll be a bond on that?
A bond, yeah, to cover the decommission, decommissioning costs.
My understanding, there is some noise associated with the battery energy storage systems. It's a low hum, if you will, from the cooling units that are attached to these. So that's something for, with the side yards, backyards, and different areas where they can be placed, it's certainly a consideration.
Consideration, and they'll have to conform to town code. I have that in there as well, that they'll have to conform to all noise storage standards and lighting, too. They should be really minimal lit, they're not manned. It's pretty much just, you know, emergency lighting.
So why aren't, under, if you can clarify, accessory and principal use, Part Two, it says in the commercial industrial zone use districts, tier two battery storage systems shall constitute a principal use, why not accessory?
I'm concerned about the density of the, you know, this is a possible discussion item, maximum build-out for these, they could be pretty big.
But they don't have to be.
They don't have to be. So that's what we don't know yet, because it's, it's a newer thing, they seem to be smaller. But as you saw with solar, you know, Greg pointed this out to me, they got, they started off with a certain size, and then they got larger and larger and larger and larger and larger.
Look at Covington.
Yeah, so I think that's something we need to think about.
We were told at one of the pre-subman, pre-submission planning meetings, and Greg, I don't know if you were there, and I know Jeff was, that only like three or four of these could handle all the needs of the entire East End.
Correct, it's not that big. You know, one that's like on an acre can potentially for four hours cover for like 37,000 homes. So I don't know what the, how many they'll be, but it's something we just don't know yet.
Right.
And that, that's something that really needs to be flushed out through the secret process.
Yeah.
I have tried to reach out to some people at PSEG, like Matt said, and some of the consultants for the comp plan have cast it to the fact that PSEG and LIPA play their cards pretty close to the chest. So, you know, but again, we want to, we want to collaborate, we're not against renewable energy, we're not against these, but we want to make sure, like Matt said, that there's not a proliferation of these, and we're not looking at 100 acres of batteries. Again, you know, Riverhead kind of being the, I don't want to say the dumping ground, but, you know, based on land, based on land cost and our current zoning, you know, it would make more sense. So we want to try to really coordinate and just get a handle, you know, reasonable and manageable growth of these things, rather than just the, you know, complete proliferation of them.
Are there opportunities to have them on town properties as well?
I mean, that's a question, I mean, that, that's something to consider. Again, I mean, if it was an accessory use, if there were, you know, it's like, if at the, the garage, you know, up on the highway yard up on Osborne Avenue, if there was an opportunity, I mean, that's something to look at. So these questions, you know, jot down, again, this is the first draft of the code, you know, we're not, we're not looking to adopt this code, it's here for discussion, but it's something to consider, yeah.
There would be pilots associated with these and not taxes, correct?
Correct. I don't believe they are taxable under the New York real property tax law, so they would be subject to pilots.
Are other towns utilizing this type of...
Yes, neighboring towns already have this in legislation in their...
Brookhaven?
Brookhaven and Southampton.
Southampton?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So when you're, just looking at the draft, so, I mean, obviously, I have concerns about it being, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, I think it should be considered accessory use, I think you could have, there's not, my gathering, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not a lot of parcels in the town of Riverhead that are going to qualify.
In industrial, there could be...
We're talking about a handful of parcels that are going to qualify based on the drafts that you've written up. And then when you make it a principal use, you're shutting down the commercial side of things. But I also feel that you're setback, so normally, if we have a 75% build-out on some of these small lots, when your setbacks at 20, 25 feet go around, what happens at that point when your percentage is less than 75%?
Yeah.
Be fair to the developer.
In terms of setbacks, the heavier setbacks are for the residential zones and industrial zones, they're going to follow whatever the underlying zoning is. It's, it's, we can definitely look at the, the principal versus accessory in those zones. I think there's a, for future build-out, I mean, obviously, there's not the requirement for the 1,000 feet in industrial and commercial zones, they can pretty much go anywhere as long as the properties meets our requirements in industrial C or industrial A. They don't necessarily have to be near a transformer. Ideally, they'll probably want to be.
I mean, the question to the, you know, specifically, when they're abutting residential properties, I mean, does the board want to see larger development of these sites next to residential properties, or would you rather maintain...
No, but I think when you generalize the legislation, that's my, my thing, is that are you cutting out some of the more other, commercial, limiting other potential sites for them? Are you, I want to protect residential homes, I get that, and I, you know, if I have a home, I don't want to hear the, as Councilwoman Hubbard says, this humming, so we want to protect residential homes. But by doing so, I don't want to shut down every other potential parcel within the town at the same time.
Yeah. And I think the heavier restrictions are more tiered towards the residential, but we can, we can look at it and make sure it's not going to negatively impact any kind of commercial development, which I think is a fair point.
As long as it meets the ANSI standards, right?
Standards in there, yeah.
I'm fine with that, and I'm glad that you put it in there because that's critical.
Yes.
Anything else?
And who will offer special permits, they're going to come before the town board?
Town board for special permit and then site plan for, with the plan for...
So are we going to make further changes on that before, and then bring it back to the board, is that the conclusion?
Yeah, I think we'll have to look at the principal for accessory use, you know, if they can be accessory to a commercial, like, you know, behind a Target or a Walmart on 58, if they could locate some of these things, something we'll look at.
Yeah, maybe a maximum improved area for batteries itself. And I think we're on the right track, I think, Greg, this is great, I just think a few things got to be tweaked a little bit.
Something that we'll definitely flush out once we get it into a form where the town board is okay with it, we then seek, you know, coordinate with SECR, I think, hopefully a lot of this will come out, we can get some information from PSEG.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, can you circulate whatever adjustments you want to the board, and then we'll...
Yep, we'll come back in another work session and discuss.
I can do that. Thank you.
Come back to work session. Thank you. Finally, we're moving in that direction. Matt, I didn't get a chance to formally welcome you, and I know you're highly recommended, and you're doing a great job so far.
I appreciate that.
And this is a little bit difficult, this project.
Yeah, it's, it's a little dense, yeah.
Yeah, I know it is. I've been reading a lot about it, and you did a great job putting it together tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And again, welcome, and have a good day.
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, and we're going to move on to, actually, resolutions. We don't have anything on executive session, so we're going to move on into resolutions. Devin?
Okay, everybody ready? Yep. Resolution number one rescinds Resolution 2022-262. Resolution number two ratifies and approves the transfer of an employee. Number three accepts the resignation of a maintenance mechanic, too. Number four terminates LOA of part-time police officers.
This is just, this is something we have to do civil service-wise every year. We appoint them, then we put them on leave because there are certain dates they can work and can't work, and it's a, it's a housekeeping thing every year that we do.
I'm proactive to make sure they're available under summer, so.
Number five, changes the status of part-time police officers.
Same thing.
Second piece of that. Number six, changes the status of part-time traffic control specialists.
Same thing.
Yep. Number seven, ratifies the appointment of a principal office assistant. Number eight, reappoints a seasonal pump-out boat operator. Number nine, reappoints a seasonal traffic control officer. Number 10, authorization for three police department employees to attend a training course.
That would be a great course.
Yeah, would it?
Drones.
I asked about it yesterday, I was like, maybe I'll say, I'll just be on the standby and look.
Number 11, extends contract for information technology with Total Technology Solutions. And I think...
You're going to make a statement on this?
Yeah, I think Councilman Kern spoke with, as liaison to IT, spoke with the department head on it yesterday, and was initially comfortable, and then I understand, maybe today, he had some additional discussion points, but he's not able to be here today, so I think Councilman Kern will get in touch with you guys to discuss anything further on that.
Okay.
And we'll make any adjustments that you guys need necessary.
Yeah, he called at 7 o'clock this morning, I'm not sure, but...
All right. Number 12, authorizes the renewal for lease agreement with Joseph Petricelli Development Associates for the Town Historian Office at 542 East Main Street, Riverhead, New York.
I like that he calls you at 7 o'clock, and you can tell us at 10 o'clock.
Like I said, he'd be talking to my dial tone at 7 o'clock in the morning.
Sorry, Devin.
Number 13, ratifies authorization for the supervisor to execute an agreement with Flynn Stenography and Transcription Services. Number 14, authorizes the Tana Riverhead Highway Superintendent to execute New York State Title for settlement with State Farm Insurance Company. Number 15, approves extension to license agreement with Waddington Realty Corp. Waddington? Waddington? Waddington, I think. Number 16, approves agreement between Tana Riverhead and Windship Media LLC, utilize parking, police personnel, and police cars, 2022 Jazz in the Vines. Number 17, authorizes purchase of 2023 Kenworth T480 Steco truck by the Tana Riverhead Highway Department. Number 18, authorizes the supervisor to attend Association of Towns seminar. Number 19, budget adjustment for Town Square Maintenance and Utilities. Number 20, approves refund for special event application, AECF Inc.
That's because under COVID, the vet was canceled, correct?
Yes, I think they originally had postponed it on account of COVID, and now they've decided it's not happening at all, so we're going to refund it.
Sure, okay, great.
Number 21, Riverhead Charter School Water Capital Project Number 82206, budget adoption. Number 22... Number 22, authorizes Town Clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for corrosion-controlled chemical PO4 for Riverhead Water District. Number 23, budget transfer for Water District Capital Project Number 81951. Number 24, Riverhead Sewer District Budget Adjustment. Number 25, Economic Development Fund Z14 Budget Amendment. Number 26, declares certain highway department vehicles and equipment obsolete, surplus property, and authorizes Town Clerk to publish advertisement for sale of obsolete surplus highway department vehicles and equipment. Number 27, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Number 28, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Number 29, approves special event chapter 255 application for our future generation for us by us. Number 30, approves special event chapter 255 application for Jamesport Fireman's Association, Jamesport Fire Department Carnival.
That's always a great time.
Number 31, publish and post for public hearing to amend chapter 253 of the Code of the Town of Riverhead entitled Outdoor Dining.
You know, can I make a recommendation on this to the board? Most towns have adopted outside dining permanently, and the last resolution went in for one year to require an excessive amount of visits. Once you meet the fire codes, these people, these establishments are always under review, and they could be reviewed at any time. So are we going to stay with three years, make, make it four? There's no reason to have somebody going out constantly.
Well, I thought the understanding when we adopted it was that we would revisit it for longer durations going forward.
And you think three?
Yeah.
Yeah, so can we make it for-
And we're at that point now, so you have no-
Three years, what, I'm asking to move it to four?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, exactly, we're going to amend that resolution? You're, you're-
Yeah, but to go for three years to four years?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we'll make that change. And number 33 adopts a local law amending chapter 251, 251 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Noise, Public Nuisances, and Property Maintenance of the Riverhead Town Code.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow. All right, any comments? We'll find-
I think it's pretty straightforward on this.
Okay, everyone, thank you, please be safe, and this work session is now closed, and we can have a first and a second to close this work session.
So moved.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you again, be safe, everyone.